I'm sorry. This is my first meeting as chair, so I'll probably make a big mistake. You'll just bear with me. We have a forum. All five of the commissioners are here. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Alex Alford, clerk of the court, for being here. Thank you, Alex. Boots McCormick, city council from Freeport. Boots, good to see you. We have a couple of announcements. The regular VCC meeting that is to be the fourth Tuesday of the month has been changed to Monday, the seventeenth, which is next Monday, at nine o'clock in the p.m. And the regular planning meeting that is the last Thursday, the fourth Thursday of the month, is next Tuesday at nine o'clock here at the end. If you please stand for the invitation. Pastor Steve Bagalas will be giving it. And just, Steve, if you could come up here and, just for everybody's information, Steve is my pastor and has been since I moved down here and also my good friend. Thank you, Steve.
All right, let's pray, everybody. Father, we thank you for this meeting. We're so grateful for the leaders that you raise up and that you put in office. Thank you for Tony's leadership as he chairs this. We ask that you would give him wisdom, guidance. Thank you, Lord, that everyone in here longs to see this area, this region, just be the best that it could be. Thank you for the wisdom that comes from above. Thank you for great presentations. Thank you, Lord, for reason and justice prevailing. We're just so thankful for where we get to live in and what we get to decide on what our city looks like and lives like. So I should have blessed this meeting. I should have blessed this session. Bless Tony's chair. And we thank you for it all, in Jesus' name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One other quick announcement. We're going to, comments are going to be limited to three minutes. We have a special group that's going to be a little longer than that for the beach activities ordinance. But when you see the blinking light, the yellow light, you've got thirty seconds. And wrap it up by the time it ends and we'll get the meeting moving along. Call the meeting to order. Does anyone have any additions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have some and we apologize for the number of them this evening. As we wind down the year, things kind of get jumbled up sometimes. So we're just trying to get everything done we possibly can. And we were perhaps a little premature on some of them, but we will get them in due time. But under additions and the consent agenda, we request to approve the purchase of a commercial shredder in an amount not to exceed sixteen hundred dollars. As you're aware, as we scan documents into the cloud, they're, the amount that the paper products we can destroy become greater and greater. We have worked on pricing to have companies that come in and do those things. We determined it would be much more economically feasible for us just to buy a shredder and do it on site. So that's what that would be used for. Also, under administration, is a request of award invitation to bid for security monitoring service to the sole bidder of JSC Systems, Inc. These will be to monitor the security systems in the courthouses. And then, under deletions, under the consent agenda, is a request to, the deletion is requesting to accept the internal audit report from the clerk's office regarding the fixed asset and the current management response letter. We're still trying to work through a couple of details there. When we get it to you for your approval, we want it to be in its final form. We hope we'll have that in short order. But we'll make sure that when it is presented, it's presented with, in a complete package so that the findings of the auditor, they are clear and our responses, they're clear as well. Under public works, is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign an agreement between Walton County and Cultivated Community Gardens, Inc. to allow the Community Gardens, Inc. to use county property located in Pageant Park. If you recall, the board approved allowing this organization to build some raised gardening facilities in the park. We had to get approval from the FDEP due to the grant that was used. We got the approval. We were asking for you to approve the contract with the Community Gardens folks. As they reviewed the contract, there were a couple of things there that they had concern about. So we pulled it off at their request for them to consider those things. And finally, is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign a contract with Yelco, Inc. for the sale of property in the Mosia industrial park. This is a contract that we're waiting to get back from Yelco. Everything has been approved. This is the five acre parcel of cost from Love's. So everything on our end has been done. It's simply waiting for them to approve, sign a contract, get it back to us. So we hope we get that done in short order. So again, we apologize for the number of those additions and deletions and appreciate your consideration.
Motion to approve the agenda with additions and deletions.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, could you amend that? Under number thirty-two, which is a citizen request from Mr. Reichenbach, that's about the beach activities ordinance. And the TDC has that as well. Could we move those together? So we do it all?
I'll do it that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
What's the board, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Is there anything on the consent agenda that any commissioners would like to have removed? No? Okay. Now we have time for public comment. This is just on agenda items. If you feel like you won't be here when it's time for your agenda item to come up, you can come up and speak now. But you will have a time to come up when the agenda comes up in its own place. Any comments they wish to make? Okay, let's move forward.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, let's move on. Now we have expenditures, approval list excluding waste management, the ELS.
Have we heard this?
Yeah, that's part of that, okay. Sorry. Excuse me, people. All right, waste management, ELS.
Mr. Chair, acknowledging my conflict of interest, I file the proper form with the clerk and will not vote in this matter.
Okay. What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comment? Any comment from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The commissioners, our first item is a request from the Oaklous Walton Transportation Planning Organization, which is administered by the West Florida Regional Planning Council. As I'm sure each of you are aware, three of you are appointed as permanent members to the TPO. That's Commissioner Chapman, Commissioner Nipper, and Commissioner Nick. They have requested that Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Gladwell be appointed as alternates. In the event one of the three can't go, the other, one of the two alternates can go in a voting manner. So we would recommend that you approve that. And allow, we'd be glad for you if you're a permanent member and can't go and like staff to work through getting someone to go in your place. We can do that or certainly your aides can do that on your behalf. So either way you'd like to do that, but we recommend your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comment, further comment? Any comment from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, for the two newmans, just getting a sign of this saying we have a TPO meeting at three o'clock this Thursday in Shalamar at the Oaklous County Annex Building. So you might be, want to come in and let us see what and how that.
I'll be there for that. Thank you.
Next item is request direction regarding two parcels. And the parcel ID numbers are there before you. These are located on Sloss Avenue, which is directly west of the county administrative building. There are two houses on two lots that abut our property where legal sits and runs to Sloss, to Sixth Street, which is the street immediately to the west of the administrative office. These have been on the market for some time. The price has been significantly reduced to a point where we think it would be feasible to at least get appraisals to see if they're close to what the appraised values would be. We would have no plans for them other than future expansion and perhaps current parking. There are days, you know, at the courthouse when it fills up, when they have a court and jury selection, those type things. So your direction, if you so chose, would be to allow us to receive one appraisal for the property to determine the value and at the next, soonest opportunity bring the information back to you as to whether we think the appraised value would be appropriate and move forward. Can tell you that, again, that is substantially less than what it was originally listed at, about a third of the original price.
Motion to approve and get appraisals. Bring it back.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Thank you, commissioners. Next item is regarding units two and three in the Freeport Business Park, which is the facility the county owns there in Freeport. And proud to say that we are now utilizing, if you've not been by, and I think each of you have, to see the inner workings. It seems to be, work seems to be flowing quite well. Ample space for everybody to have opportunity to do their work and do it more efficiently. So we're proud of that and we want to thank you as a board for providing us with that opportunity in that facility. We hope we'll make you proud in the way it's used. But we have a request from Crosspoint Church. If you recall, Port Ministries had a current lease on one of the properties when we purchased it. And we essentially moved them down to the eastern most parcel, or unit that we own, which was unit two. Sometime in the last two or three months, Port Ministries is either dissolved or taken a different turn. But Crosspoint has been paying the rent on that unit. Crosspoint has come and said they have intentions of building a facility in Freeport over the next few years. They would like to establish themselves in Freeport as a ministry and would like to rent units two and three in this, in the center. First of all, we would have to do some work to get out under the lease of unit two, which is now at Crosspoint, but we can, we can get there because it has a walkaway clause in it. One of the things that we find difficult and would make it difficult for us to recommend approving this is in their request, they're asking for a, a direct from their email is, "We feel we need to have the option to be in the facility for five years from the time we sign the lease." If you recall, the other leases that we, we have in place, each have a one hundred and twenty day walkaway clause that we can cancel the lease within one hundred and twenty days simply because we don't know what we're going to need the space for. But we bought the space to utilize for county purposes and we feel it should be available for those purposes when we need it. Therefore, we would suggest that if we had any interest in moving forward, that it only be under the condition that there would have to be similar terms in a lease with Crosspoint, that the one hundred and twenty day clause would be mandatory and/or for us to even consider moving forward. So if that's, if the board has any interest, we would suggest your direction be to make them known of that fact. Then if they have interest with that clause in the contract, then we can move forward with further discussions.
I tend to agree as much as we, we grow as quickly as we grow, especially that business park. What are our typical leases? Is it year by year or?
Three years. They've been.
I'm a little uncomfortable with the five years.
Yeah, so three years with the one hundred and twenty day out option at our discretion. So whether they're one hundred and twenty day leases as far as we're concerned.
Is that basically where they're at now?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need a motion for that?
Just direction.
Yeah, I think you can, if it's, you know, if it's something you would like us to convey back to them that if you want to, if you want to have, if you have some interest, then it's going to have to be qualified by the one hundred and twenty day out clause like all the other leases. And so.
Does the board agree with this?
I can say.
I do.
Okay. Then we will have that discussion with them and bring you back a report as to what their thoughts were. That's all right. Yes, sir.
Please come forward. State your name and spell your last name, please.
Greg McKinnon, M.C.K.I.N.N.O.N. Let me say why we're asking for that. We're, we're planning on coming to Freeport as a campus, be the first time in Walton County. We're very excited about that. We plan on opening a campus a year from January. So if we got this, if we got a five year lease, we're already down to four by the time we get it. We've got fifteen acres of land right down the way, about halfway between there and Hammond Bay. But if we, if we're starting a church from scratch, it would be very, very, very difficult to have it up and running and know that we would build the, the facility and have it ready and open by any sooner than that. One thing I would say, if, if everybody understands that, says we're at the, that would be the farthest end of the facility. The, there's two units that are being used by Port. One of those actually belongs to someone else. There's no walls between it. It's kind of an interesting piece there. It would be worth very little to the person who owns it or to there if it wasn't somebody in it. We're asking for the next unit also that when Destiny was in there, they used that. So it's just kind of bringing back together the parts that they had. So we realize that maybe this is the, you'd have to use every bit of the building to get to that because it's at the very far end of what you have. So that's why we're asking for that, but knowing that we could not do it without some guarantee because we would get in it and then we'd have to have somewhere else before we had a building. That'd be very, very difficult.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir. Next item was, was the add-on is a request to award invitation to bid zero one nine dash zero zero three for security monitoring services to the sole bidder of S, of JSC Systems. Again, they were the only bid we had, but we do think they were reasonable. And we do believe they can perform the services they require. And it's something we need to have in place. So we would recommend we move forward with the contract with security monitoring services.
What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, commissioners. The next item is a request approval to reject RFP zero nine dash zero zero four for pest control and termite services and approved to re-advertise due to the response received exceeding the budgeted amount. If you recall, we did, we put this out to bid earlier. We only had one responded. There were some issues with that. We went back out to bid. This time we only had one and the budgeted amount was substantially high. So we would like to try one more time to get a more reasonable bid and perhaps get more bidders in play. I guess it's tough to kill bugs, but it's something we, we need to do and we've done it for a long time. But we, we would feel more comfortable if we took another shot at it, perhaps with a broader net to get the better pricing and better service.
Board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We're going to do public works.
We just did.
Mr. Tussor, Mr. Bryan.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners.
Mr. Tussor's changed a lot.
Brian Kellenberger, Director of Beach Operations. Appreciate your time this afternoon. A few items of business. First one is a discussion of the beach activities ordinance and request for feedback and direction. As everybody knows, we've gone through a process at the end of the last season where we had many meetings, public workshops, sub-advisory committee meetings, TDC meetings. And we've come up with a list of sections of the chapter twenty-two, which is the Beach and Activities Code section, that are worthy of consideration for revision. Some of your package is a document that details the different meetings we had, the topics that came up at those meetings. And the important ones are the sub-advisory committees of the Destination Improvement and Beach Management, and then of course the TDC, the Terrace Development Council meeting. And then those sections are outlined there. And then in red lettering and in blue lettering is the action that was taken or the consideration that was given by the different committees. And so today, the direction we're looking for is how to move forward and with what items to move forward with. Normally, in this process at this time, my department and Walton County Legal Department would start the draft language of the particular sections that the commission feels worthy of revision. And we would then set a public hearing to present that draft copy where we would have more discussion and then, of course, the commission would adopt what they felt was, was necessary. And so at this time, I hope everybody's had a chance to read over this information. Of course, it's been made available to the public as well. And I'm, I'm prepared to answer any questions, elaborate further on the sections and the revision recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, this issue is very time consuming and has a lot of interest from the public and vendors, et cetera. I would recommend that we go ahead and set today a meeting or a public meeting so we can have discussion and we wouldn't be rushed to try and go through a board meeting or try to get it finished before a board meeting. Maybe a separate date, say nine o'clock in the morning or something.
For a public workshop?
Public workshop, so we can iron all these things out. I don't know if you, me and you just talked about this yesterday and I gave you a litany of things I would want to consider.
Yes, sir.
I think because of what I may proffer is going to probably generate a lot of discussion. I prefer to maybe wait till the workshop and we can bring it all out and move forward from there with anything the other, rest of the board members may have.
Okay.
That's fine. I would just suggest that, you know, obviously we try to set it as soon as possible so we can, assuming you guys do want to make changes, I'm sorry. Assuming you do want to make changes to the beach activities ordinance, that we have plenty of time to have our public hearing to adopt those changes. But I think we'll have sufficient time in January to do that.
Yes, sir. I mean, yes, we've, the last couple of years, these changes have actually been adopted in January. The year before that, it was actually later than that. So I think it's the importance is to get it right and give everybody a proper opportunity to offer input and have good discussion about it so that we make good decisions.
Dee, did you have a date? I'm sorry, I'm going to be scattered on your toes, Chair. You're used to that. We want to try to get it done as soon as possible, I believe. So I would.
Yeah, I think there's a meeting the seventh and eighth in Gainesville.
Yeah, there is.
I read that.
This is the new commissioner's workshop.
I'm looking at, so everybody hear me. I'm looking at maybe January the ninth, nine o'clock here at the Annex, providing we don't have a lot of construction noise. And then that'd give us time at the rest of the month and maybe go forward with the public hearing on it.
Yes, sir.
Does that work for everybody?
January the ninth, Chair.
No, I think that's when I'm in that meeting. Is that when I'm meeting, the meeting in Gainesville?
We don't have to be here.
When is, when is that meeting, Mark?
The morning, Mr. Chair. Sir, can you do early morning on the night?
Early morning on the night? Okay. Nine o'clock on the night?
Okay. Well, then, if that's the case, I'll make a motion to set that public workshop concerning beach activities for January the ninth, nine a.m., South Walton Annex.
My second.
Just to be sure, you, you two will be in Gainesville on the seventh and eighth, so I could just come on. Okay.
Nine or the eighth.
Okay. Yeah, you know, he may want to wait to get there at your workshop.
John, could you come up here? John Reichenbach?
I'm sorry, what was the location of the meeting?
South Walton. Providing we got no construction activity behind that wall.
John, would you like to speak now or would you rather wait for the workshop?
Well, I'm in a town, unfortunately, at the workshop. You know, if you give me a couple minutes, it won't take long.
Okay.
John Reichenbach, R.E.I.C.H.E.N.B.A.C.H. I'm here, a board member at South Walton Community Council, speaking on behalf of our board and our various members. I've talked to a lot of you all, so I think, and you've got the document that we produced. So I'm not going to rehash that. But I do think it's critical that we get behind and manage beach vendor program. We realize there's a lot of elements to it, but I think that there's a number of key things that we need to include in, in any program. First and foremost, stop issuing new beach vendor permits and determine how many is an ideal amount that we should have on the beach. Allow beach vendors at regional accesses only, no airport accesses. Select one vendor per regional access via a bid process. The RFP for the bid should include, among other things, minimum insurance and bounding requirements as well as background checks. Vendors should provide a full-time attendant on the beach to eliminate ghost carriers. Setups are put up when the customer. Setups are put up when the customer comes to the beach and taken off when they leave the beach. Vendor signs should be removed from the beach. It's confusing because I think a lot of the public think that the vendors' zones are for vendors only when it's for vendors and the public, so I think that needs to be clarified. Minimum setbacks should be fifteen feet, no less than fifteen feet, from the water's edge. Chairs and umbrellas should be stored in the box at the toe of the dunes. And the county should provide a code enforcement officer or paid beach ambassador to monitor each regional access and enforce the code. Now, we know that it's gonna be very, very difficult to implement a full change, I think, to all the regional access points, but we do think a pilot program at one of the larger regional access points is very doable. And we would encourage you to, you know, whether it's a small working group with, you know, the public, the vendor, TDC, a small working group to come up with a really nice managed beach vendor program that can be implemented. I think it'd be a long, go a long way towards, you know, getting everybody settled down on this issue. But I do think the status quo for two thousand nineteen is a non-starter. I think that's, that's not gonna work, so that's all I have.
Thank you.
John, I recommend that you have someone from y'all's group here at that meeting.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Johnny. Okay, we have a motion and...
Kim, did we have a second on that motion?
We did.
Okay.
It was Mr. Chapman, second motion, I was never making that.
Okay.
Okay, we have one more comment, Brian.
Good afternoon, Philip Poundstone, P.O.U.N.D.S.T.O.N.E. I have spoken to a lot of you, as well as Mr. John with the South Walton Community Council, and I appreciate Commissioner Chapman setting a meeting up for this. I'm confident that we will be able to resolve all of this, I believe, even before this meeting. And hopefully, we can come to our first ever meeting where we agree on everything and get it done in a very short period of time. And by the way, I'm the president of the South Walton Beach Services Association, and I understand that we have some issues and we have some very proactive changes that we're gonna recommend to you guys. I've got a document today that I can hand the clerk to give you all and you can review, but all this really is, is just reading material for our meeting on the ninth. But I agree with most of what Mr. John says, and we have a solution where we can provide an attendant and that no vendor goes out of business and no vendor is singled out due to a lottery. No vendor is singled out due to a highest bidder wins and somebody just has more money than other people. The small guy stays in business, big guy stays in business. We adhere to exactly what the county wants and what the general public is asking for. I understand that's important. I'm gonna live here the rest of my life and I want to get along with everybody and I care about this community, to the locals as well as the tourists. So I'm gonna hand this over to you and I'm looking forward to our meeting and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Philip. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So we will have a meeting on the ninth at nine o'clock down here.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Uh, next item is a presentation of the beach access map. Late last year, I'm sorry, earlier, later this year, you had asked us, the county commissioner had asked us to generate a comprehensive map of our existing beach accesses, the properties that we have purchased recently and our design and permitting, as well as some possible other unimproved sites that the county owns. So, the map is in your, is in your package and what we'd like to do is come back to you after the first of the year with some ideas on the, what we call the unimproved accesses or any other ones that you might want to consider. So today, we're asking if that is appropriate direction for us to follow, or do you have additional or other direction?
It is, as far as I'm concerned, but obviously, you did drop off a large map.
Yes, sir.
For us old people, could you increase the font on it a little bit, even on the big map, it's kind of difficult to read.
Yes, sir. I was gonna recommend that the easiest way to view that map is on a computer so you can zoom in and out. It's just hard to show twenty-six miles of beach on, even on eighteen by twenty-four. But yes, we'll do that. We'll increase the font size and make it more easier to read.
Where can we find this? Is that on the agenda packet on the computer?
Yes, sir. Should've been included in your agenda package. If not, I'll make sure that an email is sent to all the county commissioners and we'll put it on our website under our beach operations page identified as Walton County Beach Access Comprehensive Map.
I'm blind as well and I can't read any of that.
You certainly can see it on the eight and a half by eleven. I have a hard time seeing it on eighteen by twenty-four.
Just gotta blow it up big. I need the zoom function.
Yeah, that's why I was gonna recommend PDF on the computer. You can zoom in and make it as large as you'd like, but also, if you'd like, I can certainly generate paper copies of these eighteen by twenty-four or even larger. I have the capability.
Could you also do satellite imagery on that map?
It doesn't, we can. It actually reads better with just the, you know, the roads and the...
Brian, I'm sorry, I've received a lot of emails regarding two of Headland and Walton Dunes.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want direction now or is it direction at the next meeting or where would you like to go with this?
Well, like I said, we're fulfilling the request from a meeting that was several meetings ago to produce this comprehensive map, I think, for all of you to be able to look at and see where we have existing accesses, where we do have new accesses that we're being, that are being built, and then the location of these areas that I've often referred to as unimproved accesses. So, the direction is, I mean, we'd like to come back to you after the first of the year with more information about those particular unimproved accesses. We've already updated you on the ones we're building now. They're well underway. The Dune Allen one is soon to be starting construction. The other ones are in thirty or sixty percent design development.
And one thing I think, since we've really just got this map and like Commissioner Chapman and Commissioner Gladwell, I can barely see the streets, so...
Yeah, it's hard to...
I would, personally, I would like to have a map that I could read.
Okay.
And sit down with you and Jay and discuss it before we make any decisions on what we do.
See, what I'll do, I'll make sure that you have a electronic version of it and then I'll also generate large format copies of this map with the increased font size and I'll have them delivered to your offices. And then, in January, we can revisit these and talk more about it then and y'all can give us direction on how you'd like for us to proceed.
Is that fine with the rest of the board?
It is. I know, Mr., there's a couple of people here that have emailed me and are here to speak and that's the only reason I'm asking. If you wanted guidance, you want them to speak.
Before that...
I'd like to hear if anyone has any concerns.
I don't have a problem with speaking. Let's just now keep it short, 'cause we're not gonna make a decision tonight. I would think that it would, it would be better for them to speak when we start to make a decision, but if they want to speak...
Sure, but if they can't speak on that day, since we're changing the meeting.
And I would recommend that after, yeah, when we meet back in January to discuss these three particular ones that I would assume the direction you'd give us is to hold public workshops.
Yeah.
To receive fresh input and for us to also convey, you know, different ideas or conceptual plans that could be used on these accesses and be able to have a venue and opportunity to discuss the pros and the cons. All of these have reasons why they could be built out and they all have reasons why they should not be built out.
So, and I'm sorry, I might not have followed this, but just to be clear, we can't vote tonight on opening Headland or those other accesses.
No, no, I just, like I said, I've received a lot of emails, so I'm just, I know there's a lot of concern out there, otherwise I wouldn't...
Are there any others besides those three that...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. There is one that we call Hinton Drive. It's in the Seagrove area. If you're familiar with the goat feathers in Seagrove, we enjoy a thirty-three foot easement at the end of that road, south of Thirty-Eight, that goes down to what appears to be an area of public beach. Once again, there's some areas of beach that are listed as public, definitive ownership probably needs to be determined. I feel comfortable the county has rights to that beach. There's another one in Beach Highlands that is called Bullard. That beach and that area was, had some quiet title action to what had been previously recognized as public beach. And so it would only be an access to the toe of the dune, very similar to our Stallworth Neighborhood Beach Access just to the west of it. And so those are the ones that have been recognized as unimproved beach access points that have probable county ownership easement, some form of ownership.
Mr. Chapman, could we just include those as well, so instead of piecemealing these out, just talk about them all at one time?
That's what I was about to...
Thank you.
Sid, I don't know that we can make a motion to go ahead and set the public workshop concerning the Headland and the other two tonight because it wasn't on the agenda.
Yes, sir. I don't think that would be appropriate.
Sorry. Direction from the board is to come back after the first of the year and I would recommend that you sit down and talk with each one of us individually and explain what you think your plans are, where you think the best one should be.
Right.
And that way, we'll have a better idea of what we're dealing with.
Yes, sir.
And do all of them.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would recommend doing one.
I understand.
All right, thank you, Brian.
Okay, yep.
Do you wanna... Does anybody want to speak on this matter? Come ahead, you have one.
Better pick one. You got three out there. Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna speak because I'm in beyond January. We're at a board meeting for the workshop.
If you would, just wait till you get to the mic.
Sure, sir.
Please say your name and spell your last name.
My name is Steve Junker, J.U.N.K.E.R., three fifty Beachfront Trail, Walton Dunes. I want to talk to you about Walton Dunes, the beach access. This has come up a number of times in the last four to five years. It always comes up as a bad idea because there's so much concern with the environment, there's concern with safety, and I just want to read some prepared remarks for you to take that in mind. First, Commissioners, I thank you for looking into this matter of Walton Dunes, which is a neighborhood beach access. As you are well aware, this issue has come up multiple times. What makes this beachfront access truly unique is the distance from Thirty-Eight. It's like a mile back into a neighborhood, which really quantifies it as a neighborhood beach access. It's a busy residential neighborhood, as you all know. It has so much traffic that's going around there. There's no turnaround at the end, so when you bring traffic in there, there's no way to get it out. It's dangerous from the perspective of emergency vehicles. Of all the, of all the properties that you would consider, Walton Dunes is at the very end of the busy neighborhood where there's stress and there's congestion, a lack of infrastructure, which makes it very unsafe. In particular, and it was brought up at the last meeting, there's no continuous sidewalks. So, you get people on bikes, you get walkers, people on skateboards that are in and out of the road, which makes it extremely dangerous. I've seen kids on bikes almost getting taken out all the time. It's that exact responsibility on the part of the Commissioners of the present and the past that explains why nothing has ever been done to expand this into a regional beach access. Any expansion would be at a tremendous expense, not only to the safety of the neighborhood, but also to the environment. If you remember, this, the plan that you'll look at required you to remove a sand dune in order to put in a parking lot. The dune is already closed on the east side because a critical erosion was identified by the county. Not to mention your need to mitigate wildlife, including the beach mouse, which nests in the area. The other element that makes it really unique is the access to Deer Lake State Park. And it's been brought up before. It's like, why can't we get people to go a mile to the east on Thirty-Eight and have them use a state park that's not being used? So, really, at the end of the day, the marginal cost and benefit of taking a beach, removing the dune, putting in a parking lot over that dune for twenty, twenty parking spaces is really just not a good idea. So I really encourage you Commissioners, is to go down there, drive through this neighborhood and see what you think. See if you lived in that neighborhood, if this is what you would want to do. Keep in mind, sidewalks, bike racks, handicap access are all great ideas, but don't tear down a dune in order to put in the parking lot. Thank you.
You in black, Jay?
Good evening. I'm addressing the unimproved beach accesses of Montego, Headland and Beachfront Trail. I'll focus on Headland and Beachfront Trail.
Say your name, please.
Richard Butella, B.U.T.E.L.A. I appreciate your commitment to improving undeveloped beach accesses and the purchase of more beachfront. As the annual tourism is called Rupertson's two thousand one in development has far outpaced existing public beach accesses. Headland Avenue is a portal to over a thousand feet of public beach. The nearby Greenwood Avenue beach access has become overcrowded while vast stretch of public beach between Greenwood and Gardenia is underutilized because Headland has no beach walkover. Beach walkover at Headland would better distribute beach use by providing houses on the west end of Birmingham and Montgomery Streets with their own closer access, so it would divert over a hundred beachgoers from Greenwood to Headland. The Headland access is twenty feet wide, which would provide more space for bike racks and a shower than any other access for a mile to the west. The Gardenia Street access is only five feet wide. And the original intent of the developers in nineteen forty was to plat a access to each road. Regarding Beachfront Trail, there are no TDC beach accesses between Seagrove and Inlet Beach. Most Walton County residents have to drive to the beach and need more regional beach accesses with convenient parking close to the beach. This beach is unique due to its level terrain, which provides easier access for the elderly, the handicapped, wounded warriors and family. I'm deeply disappointed that those who oppose new beach accesses are shamelessly injecting misleading information into the decision-making process. Lakewood Drive and Beachfront Trail are not neighborhood roads. Those roads were used by heavy equipment serviced trucks and rescue vehicles prior to those trondos or neighborhoods even existing. And claims by people who are residents in an area who are lucky enough to walk to the beach, they build those mature dunes to build buildings, gated roads and parking lots, and now they want to interfere with the development of a public beach access for most beachgoers in Walton County. The TDC, part of the TDC development was to propose street parking at Beachfront Trail, which is actually advocated by city planners as a traffic calmer, with a slower down traffic. There are many examples of safe street parking in many areas on Thirty-Eight. Also, the TDC proposal is for, includes rebuilding, nourishing and protecting the dunes. And summary, please can consider developing Headland and Beachfront Trail and appreciate your courage in supporting development of their new accesses over the objections of those who seek to limit public access to use of the beach. Thank you.
Celeste?
Celeste Cobina, C.O.B.E.N.A., and I want to address the Stallworth access. That's something that's just recently been brought up with the Topsail Hill Unit Management Plan, and that is the county piece of property, but it has some restrictions on it with the federal funding. And I'm gonna read from the grant, and I don't know if you remember, but back in two thousand and three, Larry, you were the chair and you signed the grant for that, so y'all should be aware of this. But the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Grant E dash eighteen entitled "Beach Mouse HCP Land Acquisition." The grant stipulates that the purpose of the purchase was for conservation, specifically beach mouse habitat, but also includes several species of sea turtles, piping plover and snowy plover. And quote from the grant, "In the event that the terms and conditions for the..." And quote from the grant, "In the event that the terms and conditions for the long-term conservation set forth in this agreement are not fully complied with, the property acquired with an Endangered Species Act Section 6 grant from the Fish and Wildlife Service," and that's a federal Fish and Wildlife Service, "and the property used as a match for the grant dollars will be subject to transfer, replacement, or repayment to the United States in accordance with the language below." And you can read that from the grant. That grant is very specific about what that property can be used for. There's a term that you hear all the time in the state and federal government when it comes to grants or when any funds are used. It's the purpose for which that land was acquired. This has very specific conservation uses, and it was discussed in the October 2002 meeting, the access to this property. And the woman, Lorna Patrick, with the Federal Fish and Wildlife Services, the access is from the Beach Highlands access or from Topsail. The interior of that parcel is conservation, and it's very specific that you cannot build on the interior of that. I see people using that property all the time. They go to the Stallworth access, which I want to say, I think it's access number 44. And yes, there needs to be some improvements there. I agree. And I have always been, I've served, spent a lot of time on customary use, have been a proponent for it. But we can't destroy the environment or, for that fact, neighborhoods and put bodies on beaches at all costs to our community.
My name's John Harlow, H-A-R-L-O-W. I live over in Seagrove in Sugarwood Beach subdivision, which our subdivision has only one access in, which is North Greenwood. And obviously Greenwood is the access that we use, and to the point Richard made earlier, the level of crowding is growing up, going up pretty significantly on Greenwood. If you look in Seagrove, in our part of Seagrove now, nobody's building cute little cottages anymore. They're all building, you know, 25-person giant rental facilities. And big ones have gone up on Birmingham, big ones are going up on Montgomery, big ones are going up right by Whiskey Bravo on 38. And I'm also the president of our homeowners association. We had our annual meeting this past Saturday and had a vote by the membership to express this concern, not only as a resident of Sugarwood, but as the entire HOA. So I am here to urge also that Headland be considered really actively. It's a nice wide strip of land and would pull, would give another way for a lot of this new development to easily access the strip of the beach that is pretty inaccessible right now. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Alice Butella, B-U-T-E-L-A. I want to thank you for your continued effort to improve the public accessibility to the Gulf. And by doing that with the current property that you already own, I think is a great move. The property is there. I think by discussing what's best for the community would be really a very good move, and I support that. I'm really in support of three particular accesses, the improvements of Headland. I too live in Sugarwood Beach subdivision, and I, me and my neighbors would, my neighbors and I would be very pleased to alleviate all that crowding at Greenwood, and Headland is there. It's a beautiful piece of property that goes straight down to the beach, 20 feet, and that would be wonderful. And so I hope that you would help alleviate that crowding there and by dispersing our community members along there or just giving us more room once the big house people move to Headland. Also, the Beachfront Trail, I love that property. It's beautiful, but I feel that it's just being used by a few. And I feel that we were given that property, the county was, and it should be open to everybody. And access through parking and handicap, and it's flat, it's beautiful, and I think that's a very good move to do that. Montego, I'm not so familiar with, but I know how Seagrove Beach is very crowded. And I think any access there and improvement there would be a good move also. I think being proactive is the best way to go on these accesses. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Sid, none. Brian, you have direction from the board, and what do you expect to hear from you?
Before Jay comes up, Mr. Chair, Sid, I hope this is not going to happen, but it's something that came to my attention. Could be scuttlebutt right now for all I know. But there could be a move to try and use quiet tidal action in the Headland Beach area, down there where we're talking about.
Yeah, okay.
And so Steve Hall is our candidate. I just wanted to make sure he stays on top of that and make sure.
Yeah. Mr. Hall, since we retained him, he monitors the court filings regularly just to see if there's any quiet tidal actions that have been filed on the beach. So he would let us know relatively quickly if anything gets filed, and I will certainly let you guys know if that happens.
Are you still working on the Montego ownership?
Yes, sir, and that's probably something that I would discuss with each of you individually. There's some questions surrounding the ownership of Montego Avenue and some of the other roads in that subdivision, but that's something I'll certainly brief all of you on before we bring it back up in our public meeting.
And could you get with Brian and make sure these others, that we have that firmly before the workshop?
Yes.
Do we understand what we own?
Yes, absolutely. And Brian and I have discussed a lot of these issues on these particular beach accesses before, but we'll be sure to hammer that out.
Jay?
Good afternoon. You have to excuse me. I've been suffering with some allergies this afternoon, so if I'm a little hoarse, I apologize. Just a few updates for the board. Wanted just to give you an update on the high-impact penny. The county, we did hear back, I wrote a letter to DOR asking them to see if we qualified for the high-impact penny, and they responded back and said that they would give us an answer, but it probably would not be until February that they officially responded. So I just wanted to give an update on the board that it'll be probably a couple of months before we hear back from them. The October TDT collections were up 23.11% for a total of $1,663,000. And this was largely due to folks coming over and helping out with the recovery efforts in Bay County. You know, normally we would not be up this much in October, but, you know, it's good nevertheless that we have those collections. It can go into the coffers and we can use those dollars for some good things like buying beach property for parking. So anyway, wanted to give an update on that. Seacross property, Sidney and I have discussed this property, and the recommendation of legal at this point is not to move forward until we can make the determination of who owns the beach, which we kind of know that it is privately owned by the original developers. But trying to figure out from where those original developers, who they were to now, is problematic. So Sidney, do you want to kind of weigh in on that a little bit, or?
Sure. So that, for whatever reason, whenever that subdivision was developed in the 60s, the lot lines did not go all the way to the mean-high water line. So it's my opinion that the original developer who did owns the mean-high water line still owns that property. But of course, that was 50 years ago, so that person is probably, and it was actually five individuals who owned it through a corporation. You know, so it's worth exploring. You know, we can try to see if we can track down the heirs if possible. But at this point, without some definitive answer on whether or not we would own to the mean-high water line, I don't think it would be in our best interest to purchase the property. But we could still, you know, research it, and obviously if we find something, we'll bring it back to you.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the board for some direction on that. If y'all want us to still research it and see if we could possibly find those heirs, to see if there's any interest in selling that to the county, we certainly can do that. But I'm just not sure if we're going to be successful in those endeavors, but like I said, just wanted to get some direction from the board. Okay, well, we'll see what we can research and come up with and see if we can track those heirs down. And then lastly, I think it was the meeting before last, Mary Nielsen got up and went, "I presented Leisure Lane parcels for consideration over near 38 and 393." The board authorized us to move forward with appraisals on four parcels on Leisure Lane. And so I did speak with Mary after the meeting about her property, and I had talked to her real estate agent previously. And he was trying to do something with that property that I didn't think was in the best interest of the county at the time, and still don't. But after my conversation with Mary, she said that they are not interested in that deal they were proposing to us. Just selling the property outright is now what they're interested in. So wanted to get some direction from the board if you were interested in this piece of property. You have a little handout there from the appraiser's website. It's about 1,000 feet from Ed Waleen, where the Leisure Lane parcels are a little closer. They're about 350 feet, and obviously they go back as you approach Penny Lane. So wanted to see if the board was interested in looking at these, at this parcel, as well as the other ones on Leisure Lane at the same time, and then just make any determination, you know, based on the information we get back, based on your direction.
The, I went down there and looked at the Leisure Lane property. And there's buildings on that property, there's other structures, there's a pool.
Yeah.
And the road is not in very good shape either. It would have to require, or it would require some significant upgrades to make it safe. So this piece, while it's a little further, is basically virgin woods.
Correct.
That we could basically do whatever we wanted to, and it's right on 393, so it's at least worth looking at.
And just for your information, the cost, so this piece of property on 393 is 2.3 acres, and it's $3.9 million. And the Leisure Lane parcels are 1.1 acres, and it's $3.7 million. So just, that's kind of FYI for you guys to make your decision on how you want to proceed.
It wouldn't hurt to look at both of them and then we can see how it goes.
Okay. Well, since this was just an update, what I'd like to recommend is that I put it as an agenda item on the next agenda for the meeting on Monday, just to request direction on appraisals for this property, and then we can just take it from there. Is that? Good, everybody?
I agree with that.
Great. And that's it for me, unless there's any questions. Thank you very much.
Entertaining motion, open public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Legal, can we do both of them? We got it back to back. Can we do one public hearing to have both of them, or we got to go in and out?
I think historically we had, you know-
Go in and out.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
It's not that many more steps.
Yeah, it won't take long. First item is a request to approve a resolution. Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I'm sure there was a vote in there somewhere with all that you were-
Never got there.
Do you have a gavel or something, sir? First is a request to approve a resolution to bring forward $500,000 in the Mawsey Head Infrastructure Fund for the improvements to the Mawsey Head Industrial Park. If you recall, we agreed, you agreed as a board to move those funds forward so that we could begin the process of cleaning up the eastern end of that property, reclaiming that pit area. So this is the public hearing that will move those funds into the appropriate accounts.
So moved.
Second.
We have any public discussion? Mr. Brook?
Bob Brook, B-R-O-O-K-E. I just have one question. Can someone tell me what the return on the investment of the $500,000 is to the county?
We won't know till we sell the property.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
We won't know what the actual dollar return would be. Beyond that, we would anticipate there's a return in jobs and taxes and those other things that the property is there for. I don't know how to measure that, but I'm sure someone does.
The idea is to prepare the property so it can be sold for business development?
Yes, correct.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
What's the board's wishes? Any, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Entertaining motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Motion open, public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
See how easy that is.
Have we voted on it?
I think we did, yeah.
Request before you is to approve a resolution to bring forward $682,000 from the general fund reserves for the purchase of the parcel just north of Mall Drive that we have looked at over the last two or three meetings.
Send the contract for the purchases under my name.
Okay. Any public comment? What's the board's wishes? I mean, all in favor?
Yeah, yeah.
We didn't have a motion yet?
No.
Sorry.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Entertaining motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor? All opposed?
You did, dude.
Okay.
All right.
Ms. Noi?
Yes, sir. Item number 25 is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign an amended donation agreement for property impacts. And this is property that, oh, good, we have the map. It's close to Lake Jackson, but not actually adjacent to it. But this property was donated to us by a very generous individual. We entered into the donation agreement back in October, and they actually, I guess after their tax attorneys looked at it, they wanted to amend it in our favor. So it removes some of the restrictions that were in the original donation agreement. So those restrictions have been removed. I guess it benefited them for their tax purposes. So I would request that you authorize the chair to sign the amended donation agreement and also to formally accept the warranty deed for the 90-acre parcel of property.
So move.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the public? Any discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I just want to say, and I did ask Ms. Heather that we don't have a timeframe associated with making it a farm.
Yes, ma'am. Item number 27 is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign the contract for the purchase of real property on Mall Drive. This is for the sports park.
Motion approve.
We have a second? Any discussion from the public?
Bob Brook, B-R-O-O-K-E. This is the land that's adjacent to the park.
To Helen McCall.
On the west end of-
On Mall Drive. And is the purchase going to be covered by general funds or from District 5 recreation plat fees?
District 5's paying almost half of it.
And then the rest is from general funds, which is what we approved earlier.
Thank you.
And Bob, I would have paid more, but I didn't have more.
Did we vote on it?
No.
No.
All in favor? All opposed?
Okay, and item number 28 is a request for direction regarding our board meeting policies. I think it would be a good idea for us to look at those board meeting policies, particularly as it pertains to public comment. I've already started researching the matter with actually Larry's help, and I think that there is probably some beneficial language that we could add to our board meeting policies to maintain decorum, make sure the meetings run smoothly for all citizens, and give everybody the opportunity to speak a reasonable amount of time without any disruption. So I wanted to bring that before you and ask that you guys give me that direction, and I would bring back a draft to you at a later date, probably at our first meeting in January.
You want in the motion?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any public discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. One quick thing, I was going to let you all know. I got an email about an hour before the board meeting that our customary use complaint has been filed in circuit court today. So we're moving forward that. You know, unfortunately, under the House Bill 631 procedure, it's designed to be slow-moving, but we're trying to make things move as quickly as we possibly can. Um, but we're trying to make things move as quickly as we possibly can. So at this point, we're gonna work on getting the notices out to the beachfront property owners. Um, they should all have their notices right around the beginning of the year. And from there, we'll see who intervenes and we'll move forward as quickly as we can. Uh, with the understanding that again, this was designed to kind of be slow-moving. But I, I will be sure to keep you all updated on the progress.
Chad, do you have anything? Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
So the meeting that we had at the south end allowed us to move forward legally? That's what, that's what the motion was?
Right, right. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
To file the complaint.
File the complaint?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chad, do you have anything?
Nothing other than to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We do have a meeting next Monday, but. I don't know how many of yous don't travel to the Funiac, so I'll make those wishes known.
Mr. Gladwell?
Uh, I'll express the same, uh, Christmas wishes and also just like to mention that, uh, a young lady from the Funiac, uh. Last night set a school record at Walton High for points in a basketball game, fifty-one points. So, Ms. Haley Graham, we would like to recognize. Awesome job, man.
That's impressive. Uh, Ms. Nipper?
Yes. Um, looking to plus up my volunteer boards, I request your point Barbara Brooks to the planning commission to fill my, uh, vacant seat for the planning commission.
Is that a motion?
I need to make it.
Yeah.
I make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any public discussion? Any discussion from the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Gladwell, thank you for serving as my representative.
Yes, I thank you for that, Danny Austin.
Yes, it's.
She's got big shoes to fit on.
Well, you do have big feet.
Well, that's true.
Uh, I'll continue. I make a motion to request your point, uh, John Reckenbach. To the local triumph committee to fill District Three's seat and that was, uh, Mr. Fletcher and I'd like to thank him for his service on that board.
Yeah?
A motion?
That was a motion.
Second.
Any discussion among the board? Any public discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And lastly, make a motion to request to appoint Gary Adams to the zoning board of adjustments to fill. The seat that, uh, Mr. Dixon was put in right before I got into office and I want to thank him very much. He has a full-time job and. There's a lot going through the, there's some very long meetings. I want to thank Mr. Dixon and his family for their service.
Second.
Commissioner Nipper, how do you know that individual?
Uh, I've known him.
Who's, who's Gary Adams?
A gentleman who I've, one of the citizens from Freeport, who I've known for a while now since I've been on the board.
Has he lived here long?
Uh, a couple of years. He's from Miami.
From Miami, yeah.
He was on the planning board. He wanted to volunteer. I appreciate his service and I need someone on the zoning board of adjustments.
Any comment from the audience? Any comment from the board? Any more comments from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
We need a second. Oh, we need a second.
I guess.
Sorry, sorry.
All in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Nick, do you have anything?
Well, Merry Christmas to all. That's all for me.
So when you say that, you got my presents for everybody here.
I have, I got them, I got them in my truck.
Uh, and, and as the other commissioners said, we wish all of you a Merry Christmas. We know that all of you can't be. At the Funiac meeting next Monday. Uh, be sure, the people here for the items that have been moved to a later date. Be sure to be here as, if you possibly can. It's very important that we get the public input on all of this. Uh, so, don't think that you're bothering us when you send us emails and things like that. We read every one of them. So, and that's all I have. Uh, we have no citizen requests on it. Mr. Reckenbach spoke earlier. Uh, we'll now open it up to the public for three-minute comments on any subject.
Any subject pertaining to county business?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Coy Bo- Coy Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N.
You can't do that.
Right, you're not allowed to have posters.
It's not a poster. This is a map of Walton County. So I don't see why a map wouldn't, uh, Walton County wouldn't be allowed in Walton County.
That's, um, yeah, I think.
This is the First National Bank interest map that, um.
Sorry. Just timeout one second and stop her time. So Coy, under our rules, you're not allowed to have any, you know, um, big, um, poster.
What about the people that set up their displays of the developments that they're building?
That's a very good point, but those are quasi-judicial items and those are the applicants and they're afforded a little bit more leeway. So under our rules, we're not allowed to have that.
I can't present the evidence that I was requested by you to present.
Oh, I'm not.
Um, at the last meeting, uh, Melanie Nipper asked me to prove that all of the people I've been talking about are corrupt and involved in land scandals. And in order to do that, I have to start from a long time ago because the people who are corrupt now have been covering up.
Okay.
The last generations of corruption, which this is not the beginning of where everything went wrong, but this is a, this is a very.
Okay. Okay, okay, that's fine.
Specific to Walton County.
Okay, okay. Um, so first of all, you, you can't have that poster up unless the board decides she can use it. Um, and, and second of all, you're gonna have to refrain from, um, slandering anyone. So don't make any false accusations about anyone being.
Okay, well, I won't mention any names until I, until you accept my proof. But can we, um, decide whether or not this map of Walton County is, is allowed in what you think is Walton County?
If, if you guys would like to allow her to use that map, that's fine, but it's technically not allowed under a procedure.
I was, uh, um, do we have a motion on it?
There's rules.
Yeah.
Mr. Bowman, the.
Can you give your presentation without the?
Same, same to me, the wishes of the commission that you follow the rules that everybody else has to follow. So you are not allowed to use the map.
Even though this is a map of Walton County?
Even though this is a map of Walton County.
Well, we, we can't see it. I mean, we don't know what that is. Just colors and lines.
This is the First National Bank, um, out of Crestview. This is what I've mentioned many times. And you guys don't seem to let me ever present the evidence to explain it.
If you can, Coy, just give the presentation.
I will fold it up and then I can finish my time. Is that okay?
Finish it three times.
Okay, well, I'm ready. Is it just the size of it? Because I blew it up so that you could see it more clearly.
Yeah, and I, I apologize, Coy. So i- in the future, if you will, print out five copies, or six copies actually. And then we can all look at it individually. That's what's required under our meeting procedures. I'm sorry.
Oh. Okay, well, I didn't know that I had to pre-submit it, you mean, or can I bring the five copies with me when I come?
I understand. No, you can. You can bring them with you when you come. Six copies actually, one for the clerk and each of the board members.
Okay, well, that's awfully expensive. And I'm afraid that if I printed it small enough to give six, you wouldn't be able to see what's on it.
I understand, I'm.
Okay, well, let me explain. This map was provided to me. This map was hidden in the National Archives so deep that somebody had to get on their knees to find it. All of the lumber companies on this map are actually part of the J.P. Morgan Co. and the land scandal that I have been talking about for the last two years. So what J.P. Morgan did was he, he got a bunch of, um, names off of the nineteen hundred census that had Florida deaths. And he put those names on this map. Now, this map, I don't know if I can show you this one, but. J.P. Morgan basically was the first man in America to own a photocopy machine, um, or his successor, I believe, is probably the one. Well, everybody's been, been faking it over and over again. But he basically invented cut and paste to, um, lie about his taxes to the federal government. Uh, he erased the words on this map that said Indian Reservation and changed it to say Forest Reserve. And then pretty much everybody after that figured out that they could just put white out on something, change the name, and they wouldn't have to pay their taxes. And, and, and what I've been doing is working with the IRS and all of the, the green, this is the part of Okaloosa, the, of, the county you cut off and turned into Okaloosa. The blue names and the green spots are names that were on this FNBT map that are also included in the Spanish land grants. That was downloaded onto the federal government's computer in nineteen eighty-five. So basically, I've been going through this map from nineteen oh eight. And matching it up to the names that were entered into the Spanish land grants falsely in nineteen eighty-five. And from these, we can sort of do backtracking, like, this is why you're finding land that doesn't have owners, because there were no owners. And when something like, um, this issue just came up where you're gonna accept a warranty deed, that's basically the county stating that they're gonna accept a fake document as legitimate. Because a corporate warranty is not actually a title to a piece of land. If you have a deed that says corporate warranty on it. Basically, that's a company saying that they'll back up the idea that that land is yours. Where they don't really have any legitimate grounds for that, because the land belongs to me. And the IRS and the FBI and the CIA and national security and NCIS. And anybody else you can think of who's actually running the world, uh, has been helping me to, um, bust you guys on the largest land scandal in American history. So I guess that's it for my time and I'm gonna leave before Deputy Hope rushes in on me. Um, I'm not gonna wish you a Merry Christmas because I don't like you guys. Thanks.
Merry Christmas.
We're gonna talk about a twenty-minute break. Uh, we'll be back in twenty-five thirty. Hi, we're, uh, coming to the part of the planning department.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Matt Carpenter for the planning department. Uh, we've got four items to consider tonight. Uh, the first is, uh, we've, we have, uh, at your direction, issued a request for qualifications for, uh, professional transportation planning services specifically to perform a mobility fee study. Uh, we've received, uh, two responses to that request for qualifications. And we think both of these firms are eminently qualified. Uh, if we had to pick two firms that we would want to get responses from, I think these are the two. Um, however, given the magnitude of this, uh, particular project, uh, and the change, uh, or proposed change from the proportionate fair share, uh, system of managing traffic concurrency. We'd like to, uh, seek direction from the board and see if the board would consider actually sitting as this particular review committee and hearing proposals from these two firms. Uh, about how they, uh, intend to approach the mobility fee study and the implementation of, of that new program. Uh, would the board be interested in considering that or would you rather, uh, uh, we have a review team appointed to select a, a firm?
What's the board's wishes here?
That's what Mac wants, that's fine with me. You need a motion?
Uh, I think that the process may not have a motion.
Yeah, you have, you have to decide. And just for some clarity, for those that have done this before, this is an RFQ, right?
Yes, sir.
So we're basing it strictly on qualifications. You won't have a cost as part of it. That will provide you with a document that, uh, you will use on each of them, um, on a number, it's usually about ten different components. That you write down on their presentation, whether it's written that they provided to you earlier or it's what they do during a, a presentation before you. And then that will, the most qualified firm, uh, the staff negotiates the fee with that firm and brings that back to you for approval. So it, it really gives you an opportunity to know who these people are, what, uh, what their experiences are. So whether you do it, uh, our staff does it, it all comes down, you're the same path.
Mac, didn't, di- didn't someone meet with each commissioner regarding mobility, um, maybe eight, ten months ago?
Yes, ma'am, and y'all did authorize us to move in this direction and to, uh, seek some professional assistance. Uh, and that's what we've done. It's now time to select, uh, a particular, uh, firm to provide that assistance. Or choose not to.
Right, and, and. And the person that, that we sat down with was not a firm, as I.
Right.
Okay, that was a, it was a staff member, as I recall?
Staff member. Uh, we did have a transportation planning consultant that reviewed our, our existing system.
Okay.
Uh, and made recommendations in, in this direction. Uh, they did, uh, give us, uh, recommendations for revising the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. That's the one element, uh, that we have not yet changed, um, because.
Okay.
This is an integrable part of that. Uh, the, the comp plan element does anticipate that we would be transitioning to a different system at some point. So we're still within the, the authority and the policy of the comprehensive plan transportation element. Um, but this is a crossroads, uh, that addresses how we go forward dealing with transportation concurrency and the mitigation of those impacts. Uh, in other words, how we pay for transportation improvements, um, going forward. As an alternative to, uh, yes, sir, if we could have a motion, uh, if possible, we'd like to do this on December eighteenth at the QJ meeting. Motion to approve the recommendation of the planning department.
So we're gonna have the selection on December eighteen? The presentations of those?
The presentations by the two firms.
Okay, and the selection by the board?
And selection by the board, if, if that be the mood of the board. That's the motion.
Do we, when can we advertise that agenda? I just wanna make sure I have, give everybody plenty of evidence.
The firms who are selected, so we know who's gonna make the, there's two firms.
Yeah, there's only two firms that have, have given us, um, responses to the RFQ, so we know who those are. Do we need to advertise this meeting?
I think so, ma'am, I'm sorry. Just that it can avoid this option.
Um, then we'll have to push it to early January.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Is that what you guys are willing to try behind?
Well, we're just anxious to get this part of the process moving. Um, we've all been anticipating it for quite some time now.
And especially since that would be an unusual time for us to have a meeting. I would be more comfortable if it was just off the chain.
Would we want to do this at the first BCC meeting of January?
Or if you guys wanted to set a special time in January this time too?
Well, could we set it for the start prior to us getting into the agenda? Go ahead and knock that out before we get it somewhere down the road in the agenda.
How long do you anticipate these present times?
Maybe fifteen minutes per firm.
Okay, so you, uh, say start at three o'clock on the first. Meeting in January?
Are you in?
But, but just, just a heads up here, uh, in talking to, to DeeDee, you two are gonna be gone the first meeting. So we need to change that meeting to, uh, so y'all can hear this also.
The first meeting, January eighth is a new commission meeting. They're gonna be in Gainesville. Um, Commissioner Nick and Gladwell both, they won't be back in town for the meeting on January eighth.
Were we just scheduled to meet before the ninth?
Yeah, we did. Ninth at nine o'clock. That's the beach access, the beach.
The first, um, beach.
Yeah, that's just a workshop, beach activities.
Can we do it after that?
Well, what they're doing it after, it would do, would give you an end time for that.
Well, what they're doing it after, we do, we give you an end time for that meeting, which is not a bad idea. So do you think that meeting's only two hours? That looks good. Do you think two hours is long enough for that?
I'll change the motion to that, yeah, uh, is that all right?
So, uh, January the ninth at eleven AM, would that, is that gonna work that?
I, I think we'll, we'll have to work with that, yes.
Okay, okay. I'm very...
No, 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 let's... We just wanna get it right. And have everybody have an opportunity.
Any more discussion? That fits everybody's schedule, right?
And this is after the, uh, the beach activities workshop?
Yeah, okay, any discussion from the audience?
Will that be in this location?
Huh? Be in this location at eleven o'clock. Bob?
Bob Brook, B-R-O-O-K-E, is, is the RFQ available to the public somewhere?
Yeah, it should be.
Is the RFQ available to the, to the public somewhere, whatever, would I, on the planning?
I don't think we publish those, but, well, no, because the thought is or not that the actual RFQ...
The RFQ, the RFQ, yes, okay.
On the website, please?
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor? All aye, all opposed? So that will be January the ninth at eleven o'clock following the, uh, beach activities order. The workshop.
And we can make a decision on that date, right Sid? That's the inclusion of their presentation.
Okay.
And your decision will be to, for staff to negotiate a contract to bring back for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, and Board. Uh, this brings to item number thirty-four, comprehensive plan and land development code project. Um, and we've got two component, well, three components of this. Um, I'd like to ask our project manager, Kristen Schell, who works very hard on this project, uh, to come and present these items.
Kristen, before you get started, I just have a question for you. Would you be glad when all of this is over?
Yes. I will be glad, but we still have a lot to do.
I know it's, I know it's been a nightmare for you, but thank you.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I don't love, uh, doing this, but we did do it. I like working on site plans and design, but we, we're making it. Um, okay, so item number one is the, um, we're requesting to adopt by ordinance the future land use element and future land use map, which is substantively revised, and that includes all amendments, uh, that you have approved up to this point. This we have received back from the state, um, with no substantive comments.
Can, can we ask questions? Um, this, uh, L one sixteen one.
I don't have those memorized, appreciate.
What page are you on, Danny?
I'm just on the, the, but I, it was, it's in there, I read it. Um, it's the thirty-eight scenic corridor standard.
Yes, the new language. If you, uh, you won't recall, but, um, at the last meeting, uh, the board directed us to, uh, remove the twenty-foot buffer language from the comprehensive plan. Is that...
That's the...
Right.
So it, it changed it to desired?
It does, it, it's a weakened standard in the comprehensive plan, still in the land development code, but it would subject the, the twenty-foot buffer to a variance.
So, in essence, that's weakening that scenic corridor standard?
Well, it, it just allows for the opportunity for property owners to obtain a variance. And I will say, there, we've seen some unusual, I'm sorry, some...
Unusual pieces of property, just the way they're configured, that, you know, it, it would be fair for them to ask or seek a variance. And sometimes for, there's a reason why the mixed-use centers are exempt from that, and sometimes for good design purposes, you really don't want, uh, a buffer, and, you know, that's the reason why the mixed-use standards are exempt. So, you know, there's, there's some good reasons that you may wanna do that, um, on a project-by-project basis, absolutely.
So you're, you're comfortable with that language?
I'm comfortable with the language. And we have, um, tweaked the chapter six language where the, uh, actual buffer language is in the land development code. We've added a graphic, um, our landscape architect did a really good job with some graphics. So we feel like we were gonna be able to implement what we have better, uh, with what we did in the code.
One, one other thing that, and, so I'm new, so if this is not, if this is not the good question, tell me. But I, I noticed that in the design review board, or the, in the thirty-eight corridor standards, that the, the design review board is not, does not administer that, but then the ninety-eight scenic corridor standards, the design review board administers that?
Yes.
Why is, why does it administer one and not the other?
That's always been the case, and I think, I don't know, but I think the rationale might be that on ninety-eight, we have those larger projects that come through, whereas thirty-eight is more residential. Well, amazingly, the ninety-eight standards are much more involved. Yes, more, more strict.
So that is, that's the rea, uh, I was just curious why, why that is, because it seemed sort of weird that one was administered and one wasn't, and they're basically...
Yeah.
...scenic corridor standard.
As you move forward with mobility on thirty-eight and, um, you know, some projects in the future, it may be something, you know, that, where we need to look at what we have there. But, um, right now, it's, it's fairly straightforward on thirty-eight. It's pretty, and I think with the graphic that we've put in there, it's a little bit better. Um, but obviously, that's very important corridor.
Okay.
Just a little bit of history on that. The US ninety-eight corridor came along after the thirty-eight corridor was already in place. Uh, and there was a strong desire to protect the US ninety-eight corridor and the new standards, and to have a board to, um, provide some oversight, uh, of those particular ones. Uh, and I guess at the time, Larry can probably, uh, recall some of this, maybe. He, he's older than I am. Um, but the, the desire when the ninety-eight corridor came through was to really tighten things up and focus on that corridor, and there just wasn't any, um, I, I guess I did, to extend that board's, uh, supervision to the thirty-eight corridor. Um, but if that was something that the board would be interested in, we could certainly help.
I, I was just gonna make sure that if that was, if that was a flaw, that we fixed it. This would be the time to fix it, but if y'all are good with it, that's finally me.
Mr. Chairman, if I may make one point of clarity, uh, I'm not older than Mr. Carpenter.
I didn't think you was. That's all I have.
And, and just, just one of the things, uh, in working with Kristen since I've been in office, the comp plan has a lot, had a lot of regulatory items in it that, under no circumstances could be, uh, appealed. Uh, by putting things from the comp plan into the code, that doesn't necessarily mean that they can, can be appealed in one, but it means there's an option if there's a special piece of property that, you know, the twenty-foot buffer would not... It gives people a chance to appeal these to the, to the, you know, zoning or, you know, whoever, and get it done. It doesn't mean that it automatically opens things up. But the comp plan, when it was, correct me if I'm wrong, but from my understanding is when it was put before, the state tried to get Walden County to do, do a comp plan, and we wouldn't do it. And so they did one for us. And it just filled with, uh, regulatory items. And that's not necessarily a good thing. And, you know, the code, the code is set up for the regulatory items, and the comp plan is set up for the general idea of what we wanted. So that's, that's what she's been trying to do and, and, uh, been working with Matrix Company, and, and that's what they, when I sat down and talked to them, that's what they explained to me, that we're not trying to loosen anything, we're just trying to get things in the right place.
Uh, Kristen, those changes I talked to you about yesterday, is that the number one, or is it gonna be a number two?
That's gonna be a number two.
So I would take it you would need a, uh, motion to adopt an ordinance concerning this?
Yes, motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Public comment?
Fred?
Fred Tricker, T R I C K E R, representing SWCC. I've actually got three different areas I wanna talk about, uh, three minutes, may not be enough. Appreciate your indulgence. Well, there's three line items here, so if I could have a little more on the first one and...
You can talk on each thing for three minutes, Fred.
Okay, well, uh, the first issue, of course, is the scenic corridor, uh, where, as was pointed out, the wording now is, uh, scenic corridor landscape area is desirable, uh, which causes some concern. And I guess we have a, a hard time understanding, uh, why there would be exceptions to that. It seems, uh, pretty clear that there are exceptions built in, which is fine for mixed-use developments, and I understand that. Uh, but otherwise, I'm not sure why we would give people an opportunity to get a variance on that. It doesn't seem reasonable. Now, this is a last-minute, uh, addition to this, uh, comprehensive plan change. I don't think it's been reviewed, has it? This is the first hearing we've had on this specific issue. Is that correct?
Kristen, you wanna add to that? Stop this time, Fred.
It, the change was discussed at the, the transmittal hearing. It is okay for us to make some slight changes in between transmittal and adoption, uh, as long as we explain those when we, um, send the adoption package to the state agencies.
Yes, so I wanna say it's the first time the public's had an opportunity to review this with you. Uh, and I guess I would appreciate some more time to develop this, uh, meet with planning and see if we can, uh, work something out with them. Uh, so I would ask that you pull this from the, uh, ordinance that you're gonna, uh, vote on tonight, uh, to give us a chance to do that. So I think, I think it's an important issue. Uh, second issue is related to, uh, density, and I just wanted to point out there's a conflict here, uh, between the comp plan and the LDC, where in, uh, page, uh, one of your tab four, it talks about basing residential density on the gross land area. And that is a change from what's currently in the comp plan, and it's not consistent with what's in the land development code, which says that the density is based on the total net developable acreage, uh, which means you're gonna exclude the wetlands, stormwater facilities, buffers, et cetera. Uh, so they're, to me, they're tow, two different requirements relating to the same thing. And, uh, of course, I like the, uh, language in the land development code much better, but I think it's something, since we're, the objective is to clarify the, uh, comp plan and the LDC, this is a good opportunity to clean that up.
Okay, Kristen, would you like to answer that?
Um, it's on page one, tab four.
That's the, that's in the comprehensive plan, gross land area.
Yeah, okay, um...
And then...
Five forty, zero, zero, four, one.
Okay, this is in chapter five, old chapter five.
That's, uh, um...
This looks like old chapter five. Uh, is, there may have been an inconsistency between the old and the new. It's not normal to base density off of net developable, because what that does is penalizes people for preserving wetlands and things on their site, basically. I, I would not recommend doing that. I'd probably need to base it off the gross density, uh, which is the way it's described in the current drafts. Uh, because if you, if you take, we already have a penalty in our comprehensive plan and land development code where if you fill wetlands, you are penalized at one unit per twenty acres. So it really doesn't make a whole lot of sense to then say you're gonna have a different density standard that excludes those areas from your calculation. Does that make sense? So gross density, if it stands, then what, that, that's based on your total land area. You still have those penalties for floodplain and wetland that assign that one per twenty if they fill, which to me is a greater disincentive to fill than if you were to calculate density based on net.
Is, is one, is one unit per twenty acres stiff enough?
It's probably one of the most stiff penalties I've seen. Um, it definitely, in the Panhandle region, you are, um, I, I think it's a very stiff standard, and it has been effective. We don't have a tremendous amount of wetland fill on our projects. Uh, and you can look at past projects and see that, it's pretty clear.
Can I, can I back in with something additional on this issue? Uh, in the current comp plan, there is language in there for mixed-use developments that excludes wetlands and stormwater facilities from the acreage used for the density calculation. That's not in here anymore, that I can see. It's gone. And I also don't see the, uh, there used to be a double dipping requirement too in the mixed-use development, that if you had residential plus commercial, you couldn't use the gross area for both density and intensity. I don't see that in here either. So this thing's been changed quite a bit, unless I'm misreading it.
Kristen, you wanna answer that, or will you just move on?
The double dipping question, we still have the intensity standard in there, um, where they use the intensity of the portion of the project that's dedicated to commercial or not residential. There's a lot to explain here, but I don't wanna go all night. But in our mixed-use categories now, you're pretty much required to do form-based or to have a different type of development plan, and you have a straight density instead of those, um, density bonus standards that we had that were just very, very, uh, I don't know, they were just nonsensical. So you, you have a different kind of, uh, design standard now than you did. And I wouldn't penalize people, um, or developers into doing less design because of your, the density consideration. I mean, it just, when you have, we don't really have any high-density categories in Martin County. I know it seems like we do. But we have one category that allows thirty units per acre, and that's traditional neighborhood development. So that's gonna be like your seaside and your rosemary. And by the way, very dense communities. Uh, they probably are at around thirty units per acre or higher. So, but you don't really feel that when you're in those places. Um, our next highest category, we have eight units per acre, which really is a medium-density category. That is not a high-density, uh, category by any stretch. So that's all you have. And so you have some mixed-use categories that have the eight, and then they have some design standards attached to them and some requirements for mix of use that make them look and function a little bit differently. Um, what Fred is saying is that in the old plan, those, those animals, if you will, could not use the density, let, let's say if they had a commercial component, they cannot use that density in their residential component. Um, and it, it's a policy decision, but when you require mix of use and you require certain designs... Um, and it, it's a policy decision, but when you require mix of use and you require certain design standards, I think it's okay to let them have that in exchange. I mean, that's just my opinion, it's a planning opinion. But, and, and again, I don't think any of these are high-density. You know, eight units per acre, twelve units per acre, max, that you're gonna get, or thirty in T and D. And if you do a T and D, if you read the standards that you have to do to, to build one of those projects, I mean, you're basically looking at a seaside or a rosemary. And if somebody comes forward and wants to do that type of development, they need the density to put in that type of amenity or amenitize the development, make it walkable, bikeable, put in that type of design. Um, it, it just, otherwise, you, you kinda like outlaw that type of development. I don't think we wanna do that. That's kind of in our DNA, really, that type of development. Just my opinion.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
All in both.
Oh, well, we got, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there.
I'm, I'm sorry, I passed my, so I thought I had a little minute, I apologize. Lee Moore, um, and this is just a question by me personally, um, for planning, but I'll direct it to you. Um, the, and I'm, I apologize, I have not had time to go in-depth into the code, but, um, I, I too have a little bit of concern about, or a lot maybe, about the, um, movement of the buffer, required buffer on thirty A into the, or the requirement, moving it out of the comp plan, the requirement for it. So, um, but my question is, I read in the, uh, proposed language to the comp plan that it encour, they, they, they were saying it encourages, or it's good to have, um, buildings in the development oriented to the street, parking in the rear, which I agree with. Aesthetically, that's wonderful. It also tends to have a traffic calming effect. I will say some of the monster houses going up along thirty A that Hulk over the road are not really what I would have in mind for that, as an application of it, but that's okay, can't control that. Um, but in general, that does create a really nice thoroughfare boulevard feel, and it does tr- calm, tend to calm traffic, not that we need much traffic calming on thirty A most of the time. But, um, my question is, is there still requirement somewhere to have some landscaping along the front of that building, between the road and the building, even if it's not a twenty-foot required buffer? I'm not saying I'm necessarily personally okay with that, but that would be better than just having buildings up there. And then the only landscape opportunity you have is in the actual right-of-way. Am I being clear? Um, so that's my question, is whether there's still some requirement at least for landscaping.
There is, and it's actually a little bit better, the new chapter five, um, and the cha- and chapter six, which are removed. We clarified the language that, the way we were interpreting that buffer was that whatever was in there that was natural was what had to stay. It didn't matter what it was, it could've been, you know, horrible-looking, uh, stuff, but it had to stay. So we've clarified that language, that if you have a protected community, that has to stay. But then you also have to landscape that twenty foot. So it's, I think it's a little bit better, actually, it, to, you know, along what you're asking.
And I, I definitely agree with that, and I know that that was your initial intent in, in adjusting this language, which I think is wonderful. So I agree with that, where you have kinda yucky stuff that's existing out there. You don't necessarily wanna allow just leaving that out there. But if, you can see as well as I can, driving down thirty A, there are some buildings now where there's just nothing there. You got a building, concrete road, and it just, it really leaves a lot to be desired. So I, I hope that we can both get away from that in the future and eliminate it for what's already there somehow. Thank you.
Chapter five has a driveway standard, um, and this is something that comes into play with stormwater management. Uh, and, you know, something we've talked to public works about many times, is we don't really want the entire frontage to be used as parking. And so I think that that, we've clarified that quite a bit in chapter five. Take a look at that, and we can meet on it. I think it's a little bit better.
Melissa? Never mind? To the light, you have to go sit down.
It'll be, it'll be real short. Uh, Melissa Ward, Donlap and Chipman. First, I wanna say thank you to you all for doing as much as you have on moving this forward. It's been twenty-five years in the making, I swear to y'all. And Kristen and everyone in the planning department has done a wonderful and beautiful job in response to some of your questions and to, uh, Mr. Tricker, and all due respect to Mr. Tricker and what he does for the Southmont Community Council. The, um, project, any project, and just to give you a small analysis, ten acres that has wetlands on it, and the density is two units to the acre, just to make it simple. If it doesn't have any wetlands on it, you can build twenty units. If you have wetlands and you avoid the wetlands, you can have twenty units, because you cluster it out of the wetlands. If you impact those wetlands and you get a one to twenty, you don't get to build a one house on that whole piece of property. So that's what the county has been doing for twenty-five years, and it has, regardless of what some people say, been working. If you change that to where it is the overall upland area outside of all these other impacts, then people will not only not buy property down here, we won't be developing it, we won't be able to use it, and there won't be enough of the moderate and, um, for, and workforce housing available for people to live. That, that's just a fact. And it's not that, it's great to say we have plenty of houses and lots in the subdivision, but I dare any one of you to find one that you can afford if you work for the fire department. That's all I wanna say. Thank you for everything, and they're doing a great job.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of moving forward with it?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Commissioners, the second item on the agenda is, um, a request to adopt but ordinance, uh, a bulk of the new Land Development Code. You're gonna have, uh, new chapter six, seven, eight, and nine, which is the glossary. We're also striking, um, the appendixes related to, uh, the neighborhood planning density bonus, uh, framework, and some other chapters that have been incorporated into other portions of the code. This really is it, the only part of the code that's gonna be remaining after this is chapter five, which you'll have in January, and then will be totally done. Um, I do have a substitute amendment that I gave to you, and it's some definitions that we feel like we need to help implement our new stormwater management technical manual that we will be bringing in January. And, uh, we talked to you about at your last meeting. If you recall, that that technical man- manual is aimed at making our single-family stormwater, uh, program uh, more workable and implementable, while at the same time protecting water quality and quantity, uh, issues within the county. So those definitions are there. And then we also have, um, two, uh, changes to the large-scale agriculture and general agricultural, uh, general agriculture zoning districts, new zoning districts. And this really is to catch up an ordinance that I missed, that Commissioner Chapman, uh, brought to my attention because he was studying up on my stuff here, and, uh, we missed an ordinance. So we would like to include, uh, this, this new revised, revised language here.
Kristen, if I can at this time, but just through the, there's three of you that weren't here whenever this was coming, this came up. But what we had is, I had people reached out in the north end of the county that wanted to build a pond for the cows, or whatever, fish pond or water no. And the ordinance at that time stated, yeah, they could do it, but they couldn't disperse the dirt. It had to stay on-site, and they couldn't buy it, they couldn't sell it, they couldn't give it away, they couldn't do nothing. So we worked through that, and came up with a new ordinance, so struck all that, that you had, you couldn't sell it, or you couldn't give it away. They can do it, and they can do whatever they want with the, the excess dirt that they may have. So I noticed when I was reading what she's proffering tonight, that that wasn't in there, and that's what that amendment, I guess you call them amendments to what she put in, that she presented here. So, uh, that's a little history about how we got to that point dealing with, uh, fish ponds, water no.
Do we need a motion to substitute that, or?
Yes, if you can include in your motion to adopt this ordinance, the substitute amendment language.
Yes. Well, if that's the case, I'll so move.
Second.
Any public discussion? Any more discussion by the board? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
The third, uh, item that I have is the first reading of chapter five, which will come back to you for adoption in January. Um, you do have a summary there that I don't need to elaborate on, but there are some, this is probably our, our, our most exciting chapter. So, um, it, it warrants, um, some discussion, and we probably will have another public workshop in between now and January, if we can fit that in, where we can talk to folks and see how everybody's feeling about it. Um, but it does have that maximum parking requirement for short-term, short-term vacation rentals. Uh, so that's something that, uh, we've talked to you about before.
Would you, uh, would you mind explaining that? I, I remember it from the planning commission, but...
That's right, yeah.
But it wouldn't hurt us to explain that.
Okay, so, um, we had received direction early on in this project that, you know, we wanted to try to look at ways to make the worlds of the single-family residential, permanent residence, and the short-term vacation rental, seasonal visitors work together. And part of what we had talked about with it through our workshops, and, and this idea did not come from me, it came from the, the public, basically, and we've talked to our rental owner companies and different folks. And, um, just looking big picture at the thirty A corridor, you know, cars are probably not the ultimate solution. And, and I think you guys have talked about that, and we know that, that moving forward, we're looking at multimodal mobility, getting people around by box biking and walking and transit and, and different things. And now may be the time to start looking at how we limit how many cars folks bring. Um, so we also, when we require fourteen or fifteen parking spaces on these homes, we sacrifice a lot. We sacrifice open space, we sacrifice, uh, design, we sacrifice, um, stormwater management. We have, you know, lots of pervious surface. So we give a lot of things up. And, uh, one thing that, that we can do, instead of having a minimum parking requirement, is we can have a maximum parking requirement. So you only can park five or six cars at your site. Now, what's complicated about that is going to be enforcement. So, uh, this is something that we're gonna have to work through if we decide to go in this direction.
Right, and that's probably gonna require a change of our, um, our parking ordinance that's not contained within the Land Development Code, and probably some discussions with the sheriff's office.
Right, because we don't...
From a legal standpoint, can we have, uh, parking requirement just for short-term rent rentals without having it affect other things?
It is in the current draft, crafted that way, where short-term rentals are pulled out. So in other words, they're not classified in the new zoning scheme as single-family residential. They're something else. They're short-term vacation rentals, and will have to be identified as such during permitting.
How did, how did, uh, how did the meetings go with the, uh, short-term rental pay?
They really liked the idea, and they were very willing to help, uh, you know, maybe like give, uh, window tags for cars, you know, and inform their customers that, you know, we don't want, you can't bring, uh, so many vehicles. Um, and so they were, I, I heard no objection. In, in fact, they offered to help. I think everybody kinda understands that when you talk to folks, the issue is the cars all over the place. You, you, you know, it's, it's not, it's, it's cars all over the place and the parties and what have you, but, I mean, I can't deal with the parties, but I can deal with the cars. So that was, you know, one of the big issues, and that...
What it's gonna require is whenever someone is parking on the right-of-way, because they don't have a space allocated to the, their lot or their rental house. Um, currently, the way our parking ordinance is written, it's that you can park in any right-of-way as long as it's not marked, no parking. We would need to switch that to where you could only park in the right-of-way where there's a sign specifically allowing you to park there. And it would require...
And you need a ticket, I mean, that may be what has to happen.
Yeah.
And this, we're not in uncharted territory. I did do a lot of research of other vacation sort of dominated communities, and this is the way that they are handling this, um, so we're definitely not alone here. And there'll be examples that we can draw from if we do decide to go this way. Um, but the only other alternative, uh, really is to require more parking. And, um, that just didn't seem palatable to anybody, really.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's definitely doable, but obviously, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna take some more probably considerations to make it work in a practical sense for enforcement.
This is just the first reading of this, right?
Right.
Yes, first reading. So you have a month to think about it, and we can take longer if we need to, and, uh, we're glad to meet with you guys and talk about it.
Kristen, let me just, I'm sorry, Commissioner, um, if we decide to pull out that portion, just that portion, to continue it, that won't cause us a problem in January?
No, absolutely not. We can do that, we can workshop it further, we can, you know, I, I agree, it, it needs, it needs... If, if, if that's what we wanna do, then we need to do a lot of work on the implementation side, I think, probably prior to the actual adoption. Uh, unless we just decide that, you know, we're, we wanna move away from cars in the future. And I, it really is a bigger issue than just the cars at the rental. It's a, it's a big thirty A issue.
So is it, uh, is it, there's a size, is there a ratio, like square footage versus the ratio of how many maximum cars? Is it kind of commensurate?
It is a straight-up max. Um, if you, if you base it on, we currently have a standard that's based on bedrooms.
Right.
And what that's done over time is caused people to lie to us about what's a bedroom and what's not a bedroom.
Closet is all it takes.
And then we get into life safety issues and all kinds of other things, because they're putting people in, in rooms that weren't supposed to have people. Um, so we could go to a square footage requirement, which, which we have in Grayton. Uh, Grayton Beach Neighborhood Plan has that square footage requirement, so it's based on the size of the home. And we've got some homes in there that have sixteen parking spaces. Um, and you can look at that and see what that has resulted in and decide if, if you like it.
As, as y'all explained at the, at the planning commission, this, the desire here is to limit these monster houses to, and this is a way that we can do that legally, is to at least dis-incentivize building those, among those things?
Well, I think you're disincentivizing everybody bringing a car.
Or at least that.
Um, you know, there's potential that you might get a ticket, or you might have some kind of an issue if you bring multiple vehicles. So you have to make a decision as your group of who's driving and, and who's coming. Uh, I think that's where it would go. The stormwater standards, the single-family stormwater standards that we have are somewhat limiting. Our height limit is somewhat limiting, yes, we do have some limitations. Um, it's just, to me, the huge house looks worse if it's surrounded by...
Parking.
Yeah. I'd rather there be some green, you know, I mean, so that's, that's one thing you trade off, is you see that, then on thirty A, the, the entire frontage is made up of parking.
Could, could we, uh, as part of, between now, could you start working on some draft language to...
Sure, I mean, it...
Clean this up?
It would be relatively easy for us to clean up, um, our parking ordinance that's in our regular code of ordinances. In fact, I think AVCON, whenever they did their study, recommended that we do that. The problem is gonna be the enforcement of it.
Well, I'll just lead in with this, and, you know, it's always, just by any time we pass an ordinance, there's an enforcement arm to it. And we don't have, well, I don't wanna throw the sheriff under the bus, because he's got a thousand things going on, especially on the south end during the season. But if we don't have a mechanism available to have, if it's five spots at that house and there's ten, we gotta have somebody to go out there that's got the authority by law to either move them, tow them, cite them, or whatever the case may be. So whatever we end up doing here, it's gonna take a conversation with somebody at the sheriff's office, and I'm not talking about a sergeant or lieutenant. You get up there around the chief level or the sheriff himself. Because you gotta get a commitment from them to enforce it. If you don't get it, it's just on paper and it don't mean nothing.
Yeah, I totally agree. And, you know, there may be different ways to do that, a parking, police, or, you know, there's different ways that different places have done it. But you're absolutely, I to, that's something...
I mean, we could even look... We could even look at something like they got in St. Augustine, they've got meter cops, if you want to call them that.
That's right, yeah, right.
They go around and cite and all that, yes, there's an expense involved in that, but we gotta do something, or let's not even write it down on the paper. Can't enforce it, there's no need in doing it. I only have one other question, Kristen, that has probably nothing to do with what we're talking about, but I just want to check something. Those setbacks I talked to you at the, at the break, what chapter would they be in?
Those are actually gonna be in chapter four, which is our environmental ordinance, our environmental chapter of the code. But we did remove some of those, we removed from the comp plan some of that. So there's less specificity in the comp plan now related to those.
Right, and, and for the rest of the board, especially in the north end, south end is quite different, but in the north end, I've had people that wanted to build near a stream or creek, and not a big one, we're not talking about Chalk Hatchie, that because of the fifty-foot setback from that creek, they were unable to put it on their property. They had to move elsewhere. So I've asked them to consider, or for us to consider, changing that from fifty to twenty-five foot. And I think the people I talked to, they kind of would agree with that.
There, piggybacking on that, there's a lot of concern in the, in the north about land splits. People who want to give like an acre to their children to build, and under the current provisions, you know, a lot of that land up there is on like twenty to one, or, so if, if, say for instance, I want to give my son an acre to put a house on, I can't do it because it's already, is there any way we can?
There's a provision for family members. What you get into a problem with is whenever it's not a family member.
Doesn't it also say that, that split is one to two and a half? I mean, you can cut out two and a half, and I still don't think anybody's there, explain to me where they come up with two and a half.
Hey, I don't know where you came up, where that came up with, but there is the provision for family members, and we did relax that somewhat in this update to where the family member doesn't actually have to homestead the property, which is, brings us into consistency with the Florida statute on, on family homestead. And the, you, you, there's no sign, size limitation on the family. Like, I could give a half acre.
That's what I was gonna ask.
But if it's someone's not related, that's when, that's where the two of them have problems.
And it can only be split once, once that property's split from one area, one, one time or one.
For family, you can split multiple times.
Okay. All right, I misunderstood.
So, say that again, it can only split once amongst the family? Or as many times, if I have four members in my family?
Yes, sir, you could split for each one of your kids. If you had four kids, you could give each four kids a piece of your property.
Where we run into problems is whenever it's not family members, and the people don't go through a plating process, they'll just cut off an acre here, an acre there, and that's where we have problems.
What denotes the family? What denotes the family?
Um, it's laid out.
It's just defined in the statute, immediate family.
There are specific, in the state statute that our code follows, there are specific relationships that are mentioned in the statute. It's typically the most immediate family, father, son.
Grandkids.
There seems that somewhere there's a disconnect, because I don't know how many people told me they're, they're having trouble with getting.
If I could explain the, the lot split process? The comprehensive plan land development code basically specify that land has to be subdivided by process. If it's a lot of record, we've got a simple process to split at one time. It was available to everybody when the comprehensive plan was adopted. That is still available. The lot of record date is the lot has to have existed in its present shape, and legal description as of November seventh, nineteen ninety-six. If it does, and it's still that, you can use the simple lot split process to split at one time, and that doesn't require a family member relationship. Once it's been split, you have to go through the development order process and the plating process to further subdivide it. But on a lot of record, that first time, you don't have to go through the DO process. We've got a very simple lot split process that's handled at staff level. But once that, that property has been cut, it's no longer of lot of record, and it's subject to the normal development order processes and standards. However, for a family lot split, one of the things that we've removed is the requirement that the parent parcel be homesteaded. I mean, the original statute that provided for this process basically intended for a family farm, and you want to have your kids live on your farm, and you want to give them some land so they can live in the area. That's exactly what the family lot split is, is for. Now, over time, especially years ago in South Walton, we had all kinds of creative family lot splits happening, and, and they were available in residential preservation, and the commission later decided that that was not the appropriate category, given the abuse of that particular process that was occurring. It was all legal, except there was a loophole there that allowed you to shortcut the process in South Walton and create lots outside of the normal development order process by using the family lot split process. And there was a requirement that whoever, the family member that received the lot also had to homestead that lot within twelve months. And we were having circumstances where we'd have a family lot split, and before they even inked got dry, that lot was sold to somebody else for a vacation rental. That we don't have anymore. But we, we certainly have the circumstance where a, a family owns a parcel, let's say it's in general ag, it's been used for farming. The house is not in that general ag, on that general ag parcel, their homestead is not on it, but they own a whole bunch of these, and that one just doesn't have a dwelling on it. Previously, that was not available for a lot split because it wasn't homesteaded. That will now be available, because that's a fairly common circumstance where I've got some property, it's not the one that I have my house on, but I want to give my, my child a portion of that other parcel. That's now going to be available to do through the family lot split process. And you can do that once for an individual family member, the recipient. But if you've got fifty kids, you can do it fifty times if you've got enough property. But you just can't repeat it for the same child out of the same parcel.
You got fifty children, you don't have fifty acres, right?
That's probably true. But that, that's the distinction between the lot split process, the development order process and plating, and the family lot split process. So we're actually making this easier.
I hope so, because as long as we can get away from, because you know the situation I had a couple of years ago about a family lot split, and they said it's two and a half acres, so that two and a half acre threshold is no longer applicable. It's whatever they want to give, whether it's a half acre or an acre or whatever. Is that correct?
Ideally, if we can make it meet the density requirements for that particular land use, that makes selling that parcel later to someone else much easier, but that's not a requirement.
Kristen, what are you asking for here?
Uh, so this would be, yes. So a motion to approve the first reading and set the second.
Do we need to cut out the parking requirements for that?
No, I mean, give Kristen and I, and I maybe some more time to think about it and try to explore the enforcement, and then we can give you that information at the second reading, and then at that time, we can pull it out if we need to.
What's the board's wishes?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any comment from the audience?
Lee Moore, thank you. I just want to commend both staff and the, the board for being willing to take a hard look at the short-term rental issues. Ms. Noyez, Ms. Noyez, please correct me if I get off track here, but my understanding today is that the state does not allow prohibition of short-term rentals, nor does it allow regulation of the duration of short-term rentals or the frequency that a home, a home can be rented out. But otherwise, it does allow for regulation right now.
Yes.
And there's a lot of feeling that there could be a move toward taking away more and more of local government's ability to regulate.
Oh, I guarantee it.
These short-term rentals. So I think the sooner we can get things in place, real material things that'll make a difference, the better, because they may grandfather in existing local ordinances and codes, and we really, really need that. So I would just encourage you to stick with it and do it, move as quickly as possible, and be willing to go through some pain like the parking enforcement and all that jazz, because, look, we know it'll be painful, just like any big change we make, the first few years, you're gonna have pushback and crying and fighting. But when you get through that pain, everybody just accepts that that's the culture here. And so I think if we bite the bullet and yank off the Band-Aid now, we'll probably be really glad we did if we're able to get some things grandfathered in that will protect the quality of life and actually the value of renting here as well. Thank you very much.
I hope the legislature honors grandfathering for this ordinance rather than other ones in the past, or in particular.
You know, they're, they're trying to, they're trying to take all the rights away from the county, not only for short-term rentals, but for a lot of other things. Melissa?
Briefly, on the parking requirements, a firm represents several people that are management of the short-term rentals type things on thirty-eight, and the SBA has a lot of them involved. And they support the regulation of parking and to getting people out there to hand out tickets if necessary. Several of the people that do this on thirty-eight put on their website, there's only two parking spaces, you can only bring two cars. They have to be, you know, you can't bring three SUVs, you can bring one SUV and some smaller. And they're not, they don't have the teeth to make them stop doing it, so they park in the streets and they get phone calls. And the owners who don't live here are unable to do their own policing. So they, that's when, when she was talking about the meeting, I brought several people to the meeting to talk about this. They want to be in compliance with your codes. They have houses to rent, people bring a lot of people, but if we're able to put them in the house and limit the number of cars on the road and the number of cars in the streets, then they're still gonna come, they're just gonna come together in one vehicle instead of a mom and a dad in an SUV, and a daughter and a son in an SUV. So we, you know, there is something there to be said there about, once you establish your ability to enforce it, then immediately send out and, and get involved in an information platform that explains to people, put it out on your websites, put it out, give them information to put on their websites, that there will be an enforcement. And you'll see a huge, huge appreciation from the community for that. I just wanted to throw that out there, the parking is essential to that. Thank you.
Anyone else? See no one?
Motion to adjourn. Oh, have we, I got ahead of myself? Okay.
You're tired, I'm not.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Where are you, John?